The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. We'll call the regular council meeting of April 11th to order. First of all, under presentations, we have none this evening. Under adoption of the agenda, could we have a motion to adopt the agenda, including accepting the new downtown revitalization plan which City Manager will be putting on right away? Thank you. Councilor Vroba is seconded by Councilor Clark. Questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Take it away, Jeff.
Thank you, worship. There was a request. We've been working over a downtown revitalization plan over the last six months with three public consultation engagements. They have finalized a rendering based on that feedback, and we'll play that in the council chambers now, and we can have a discussion with it afterwards.
Thank you, City Manager. I've heard nothing but positive. Okay, well, that was great. Thank you, City Manager. I don't know if we had any comments from members of council before we move on, or if not, I take it everybody's tickled pink. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, worship. Yeah, I've heard a lot of great comments, a lot of great suggestions and thoughts on this, as well as just a lot of positive talk about it. I think there's a few things to know, too. It's just that, you know, this is rendering, and there's still a lot of, you know, work to be done, and we still are very open to any comments. There's a survey. It's, I am told, fairly long, but very valuable. If you can fill it out, it's worth your time as a citizen to fill that survey out so that that information can go into what plans there are, and we can keep fine-tuning this with all of our staff to make it happen. I think there's a lot of good there, so.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Any other comments? Councilor Vroba, then Councilor Clark?
Thank you, worship. I was just gonna say also, one comment I have heard is who's paying for this. And so basically, this funding will come from the Western Diversification Funding, which is a federal program.
That's correct.
And so this funding, if we don't basically utilize it, if we're accepted and we're approved, another community is going to utilize that fund. So that is why, 100%, why we decided to do this and move forward with it, and I think it's a great idea if we can get the funding for it. And yeah, I've heard a lot of great things. I've heard some comments regarding the snow removal, different things like that. But again, what Councilor Frank said, these are renderings, that they're design concepts, and so it'll be fine-tuned once, basically to our climate, once we are approved with funding. So it's a great concept, and I think we can move forward.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, that's a good point. We'll go through our people like Dor Mac and make sure that we're not making things more difficult for his crew. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I guess my comment is that the acceptance from the downtown business people, who are the people that this will affect most, that they are on side and they've had their input, and I think they see that the transition from a change for the look of Estevan and for how this is going to affect them is important to them. And I think that's the important thing, is that they're the ones most affected, and if they're supportive of it, I think that makes it easy for us to support it, too.
Absolutely. Good point. Any other comments? Councilor Frank?
I guess the one other thing I just wanted to throw out there, too, is through this process, as you mentioned, we've had two or three consultation nights now. We've had 20, 30, maybe 40 people from the community who have volunteered. They've come out multiple nights, volunteered their time, given their opinions. Some of them are from downtown, some of them are from the Act Dev Board, and some of them have nothing to do with it at all, aside from being good community people. So just thank you to all of those people who have gotten us this far and given all their opinions, so.
Absolutely. We've had good feedback, and we thank the people of our community for that. Thank you. Okay, no more comments? Councilor Wallyser, you're happy? Okay, awesome. Okay, that's great. Moving forward then, could we have a motion, please, that the minutes of the council meeting held on March 28th be accepted as presented, please? Thank you. Councilor Frank, seconded by Councilor Sernick. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Estevan Bruins, a request for event permit on May 26th at the Centennial Cup. The Estevan Bruins Hockey Club is hosting their annual banquet during the Centennial Cup on the date of Thursday, May 26th. We are expecting a high volume of personnel to attend due to the traveling teams from across Canada, parents of the players, billiards, and community. At our current projections in comparison to previous years, we are looking to host 450 people at our event. With this in mind, we, the Estevan Bruins Hockey Club, in collaboration with the Centennial Cup Committee, would like to request the use of the curling ring for our event for the banquet. We would like the city of Estevan's approval for a special event permit so we may obtain our liquor license for the 26th of May. Alcohol would be from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Thank you for your consideration. What's the wish of council? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I'd like to make this motion, as long as it doesn't get in the way with parks and all their, I believe the flowers and stuff go in the curling ring around that time, do they not?
City Manager?
Thank you, Councilor Ford. So we did arrange that, that we would find alternative arrangements, and it wasn't going to be an issue at that time.
Okay, then I'll make that motion to accept this.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ford. Have we got a second? Okay, Councilor Sernick, any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have the GFL report for February and March. Could we have a motion to accept both of those, please? Thank you. Councilor Clark, seconded by Councilor Sernick. Questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have Bethany Paul, Community Entry Plan. That was tabled from our last meeting, so thank you both so much for coming this evening. Please come and sit down at the chairs in front of you, turn the mic on, and we would be happy to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for inviting us to be here. I come with the assumption that you've read our proposal, so I want to let Chris speak mostly because this is his big dream that I am right on board with him for, I wrote City Council and have just been amazed at how easy you guys made the process to come and have a voice. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, and we really appreciate. I know you guys have already put a lot of work into it, so thank you very much for that.
This is years of dreaming.
What I didn't, when we presented or sent you guys the package off, that we did send off, I'm sure you guys will probably have a lot of questions regarding a bunch of the logistics that, I also still have some questions regarding some of the logistics. I did do 3D renderings. Essentially, I used a free program, so it's not as high-tech as the video that was there, but it's still pretty good, actually, for what I was able to do. So I do want to get that to you guys, so you guys could actually see the drawings and what the, more or less, the vision is. But I'm not familiar with the process that, as far as I'm asking the city for at least land, that is, city land, or a lease on land, that is, city land. And then, so I'm not actually familiar with the process to see if this is available, or if this is actually possible.
You know, if council agrees this evening, then our staff, we have great staff on, that we've hired, so they'll look after the rest.
Okay, okay. I have sat down with Rod Marsh. I had a couple phone conversations with him that were pretty lengthy conversations, and then we sat down in his office there and went over available, or not available, but land in the city that's, he, his first question was, "What's your dream?" The email was pretty vague, so, "Put together your business plan." Well, we basically had it put together, so then I was able to say, "Well, this is the business plan. This is the dream, more or less, and this is the plot of land, or the size of land that I would be looking for to be able to accomplish this dream." And my minimum was right around that two-acre lot. If that wasn't feasible or wasn't realistic to be asking for, we would scale back and could scale back to a smaller scale. That limits our reach as to how many people we can actually reach with this initiative. So then, he went through and showed me plots that potentially I could ask for, that might be available. It doesn't mean I'm gonna get it, but I could ask. And after looking around the city and what the city owned, I basically fell in love with one already, and I've done my drawings around that one. That doesn't mean that they're set, because I'm super flexible if we can get this off the ground with working with you guys, with working with any, and a lot of organizations that are already going in the community that I've reached out to already.
Okay, I think it's awesome, and thank you for putting this together. I know it took a lot of work. And in these times with supply chain issues and the cost of food going up, it seems every day, I think it's a great idea. Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, worship, and thank you both for coming. Yes, last time when we first heard about it, I thought it was kind of a, kind of a quick idea that you'd just come up with. And so I was super impressed when I read this and thought, "Oh, they put a lot of work into this." And so to hear this has actually been a dream of yours impresses me even more, because then we know it's not just something that's gonna happen for one summer. That would actually be my fear, is that we had done this just kind of a quick reflex thing to the problem at hand right now, and to know that you actually want to be invested in this and see a dream come true, I definitely would support this. I think the area by the water tower that you've picked out, if Rod is supportive of that, too, I think it's a great location versus, I think when we first were talking about it, we were talking about different plots of land where a home had maybe been. It just didn't seem, compared to what other communities are doing for a community garden, that that would be big enough or good enough kind of an area. This seems very well thought of, and a lot of thought put into it, and a lot of work already, especially the community support that you've already received from individuals and businesses is very impressive.
It's amazing.
Yeah, and then I, you guys got a copy that's a week old, I guess, as far as the community support section that we copied and pasted into that proposal we sent, just so you could see what the community's said about this already to us. But since then, I've got, I don't want for anything now on that list. There is actually nothing on the list that I need anymore, and I went above that. We were hoping that I was gonna donate a smaller shed. I now have a, well, it's twice what I had written in there, nine by seven, so it's 10 by, I forget the exact dimensions, 10 by 20. So we have a bigger, a much bigger storage shed that would offer us the, both sides, storage for tools, and then also the actual community pantry where people can walk in, and it's essentially a mini grocery store, almost, for people to be able to take.
You also have in there the harvest dates, I thought was really good, too, because that way people would know when the best day to come and pick up things, and then you're also gonna be working with the Salvation Army. No, I think it's a great plan, and I would definitely support you. So I would like to make the motion that we do proceed with the caveat that basically Rod Marsh is...
That our staff is on site?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, City Manager?
Thank you, worship, Councilor Vroba. I actually just received a text from Rod 10 minutes ago, and he said that he had met with him and is in full support of the project in this area.
Okay, then I would make the motion that we go ahead with the location that was chosen by Rod and, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Vroba, Councilor Wallyser, then Councilor Ford?
Thank you, worship, and thank you to both of you for coming. I really appreciate the idea that this isn't just looking at the nutritional needs of people, but you've also addressed the importance of youth being able to volunteer in our community. You've looked at intergenerational sharing of knowledge by using community members with experience in gardening to train up the next generation. It really is that holistic community garden that we were missing, so thank you.
Yes, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wallyser. And yeah, so we're so fortunate in our community. Anytime you have something good like this, the volunteers come forward, the companies, and it's really nice to see. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, worship, and I agree with what everyone said. This is a fantastic idea. I think it's gonna bring a lot of people together, and, you know, a lot of people live in apartment buildings and places where they aren't even able to garden or anything, and I think that that really helps bring people together, that they're able to get out and help the community. I just am wondering about the location of this, excuse my ignorance, but where on Smith, like, it's back on the back alley along that tree line, like between the exhibition hall? Is that correct?
Thanks, thank you, Councilor Ford. For my discussions with Rod, there is a long, wide strip behind the back alley of Smith Street where that would be located. Is that correct?
Yeah, so I went out and actually surveyed, or not professionally surveyed, but measured the space. There's a swath there. It's about usable swath that's 70 feet wide, and then 900 feet long. And then there's trees on either side of that, so that adds to it. When you measure the whole thing, it's about 90 feet wide by 900 feet long. On the other side of the trees, I know that there is a water, a city water line, like one of the main water lines under there, that runs, so, but that's north of the trees, so that would, or I guess that'd be south of the trees. So that section of it would not be part of the garden, and the garden wouldn't affect that as it's on the other side of a row of trees. And then, I haven't looked in yet, because I wasn't, I didn't want to spend a bunch of time on this land if this wasn't an ability, but I still need to look to see what's under there for power, whether it's power, SASTEL, any of the other services that could potentially be. But as far as city services, there are no other city services in that swath that we're looking at.
Great.
Is this something, sorry, is this something we need consultation with the people in the area of? Is that something we would normally do? Just because it is, it is in their back alley, kind of, it's not on their land, obviously, but it will be affecting traffic in their back alleys and such?
Yeah, I don't know if we'd have that much traffic there, you know, Councilor Ford, but we can definitely check into it. Like, to me, it's a positive thing within that part of the community. I wouldn't look at that as detracting anything, but having said that, if you like, we can check that out. Okay, Councilor Frank?
Thanks, worship, yeah. I wouldn't be, I think it's probably not a terrible idea, just to make sure everybody in the community likes it, rather than us put it in there and then have somebody grumble about it or anything like that, and make sure everybody's on board. But other than that, I'm gonna second the motion. I don't think anybody has yet, so I'll second the motion, because I think it's a great idea. Let's go ahead.
Okay, okay. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, it looks like everyone's in favor, so ready for the motion? All in favor? Carried. There you go, guys. Great job. Go hard.
Nice.
Thank you so much.
Um, so, moving forward then, I'd like to, do I continue to work with Rod?
Please.
As far as that, as far as planning, program, and getting everything set up to do it?
Absolutely.
And then, I have everything available. Like, there's a bunch of logistics that I have to organize, as far as it's got grass on the property, so I'm gonna have to bring in and cultivate the property, and it's not the whole property, but sections of the property. There will be pathways. Year one, there may not be fully developed pathways. We may leave it to grass, but as, if we can get grants for funding for future years, that's something that I'd work with you guys to see if, I don't want to put in anything permanent that you guys can't, if you decide, hey, the exhibition ground wants to buy that property, let's see what we can do. I'd love for it to be permanent, to be a staple of Estevan forever, that you don't ever, you look at it and you're like, "We can't sell that." That is, that is a staple. That's part of our community now. I think after year one, I think I can convince you of that.
I'm sure you can.
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure. I just need to, I need to get seeds in the ground is my biggest thing. So that may weekend, that may long, usually, it might be the weekend after, depending frost, but I know that there's a lot of logistics, so just knowing who to, who best to contact, who to coordinate with, if there's people in the building here that I need to coordinate certain things with.
Absolutely, and through the good offices of the City Manager, we will make sure that you get in contact with the right people.
Perfect.
City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I'll fire you guys off an email with the contacts of Engineering and Water Services on the side, and the Parks Department as well.
That would be perfect, yeah.
Good.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes, I thank everyone here for their time and the support that we're seeing from you guys. That's Estevan. We've seen it from everyone, so no, thank you very much.
Absolutely, and thank you both for all of your efforts. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, and you guys are welcome to stay, like, nobody ever stays. You would be the first, and I totally get that, but anyway, thank you for coming.
No, thank you very much for our...
Okay. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from Thunder City, a request for the usage of 11th Ave. So what is the wish of council on that? We have from Mr. David Hire, sending this email requesting permission to block off the north half of 11th Ave, between 4th and 5th Street, May 28th, for a demo day. We plan on making a small demo track, adding a few piles of clay for hills. I don't feel there will be much speed involved in a closed, small course like this. I'm also asking if we can rent or use some barricades and traffic cones. We're planning a noon barbecue at either Speedy Auto Glass or our lot of Thunder City. This shouldn't affect the Salvation Army too much, and the alley will be clear. Thank you in advance. So what's the wish of council on that? Councilor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. When I first read this, I thought, oh, it's a great idea, something different for downtown, but then my second thought was, what about the Police Board or the Traffic Board? Do the police have any issues with this?
Well, we have talked to Norm, and we have a Police Board meeting coming up, so we can discuss it in that forum as well, Councilor Vroba. But Norm thought if they put canvas down, like where these mounds of dirt would be, it would make it much easier to clean up, and that we could make it happen.
Yeah, sorry, and I guess I said Police Board. What I more meant was Chief of Police, if the Police Department actually had any issues.
Yeah, and we can bring that up at the meeting. I don't know, City Clerk, did we already ask them?
Yeah, your worship to Councilor Vroba, Police has already signed off.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Okay. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make the, I guess, I'll, I'll make the motion. I think it's what we've been looking for, people to do things downtown, to make it into that, and I think it fits into what we're trying to do there, so I will make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Frank?
Thanks, worship. I guess the only question I had, I think it's a cool idea, I just wondered if we have any precedent, because this is a private business doing this, and we typically have things that are, like, this is kind of promoting products and stuff like that, and not that I think there's anything wrong with that, but I just wasn't sure if we've ever done that with a private business before, or would we treat it any different than a not-for-profit or anything like that. And the other reason I ask is I just, you know, you approve one, you get 50 others, so I just want to make sure, you know, before we have a car dealership or somebody else or something bigger wanting to close off a street. Do we do that normally, or have we ever done that?
Well, I do understand your concern. I think in this case, because we have access and egress through the back alley, we don't have a load of businesses. We're looking at two on the one side, Salvation Army for the most part on the other. The other business can be accessed from, accessed from the next street, so I think we should be okay.
Sure. No, and I love the idea, and I would love to see it go forward. I just wanted to make sure we knew where we're standing, just in terms of precedent.
No, that's fair.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Councilor Sernick?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other further questions, comments? Seeing none, ready for the question? All those in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee, the minutes of March 22nd. And Councilor Clark, any other added comments you'd like to contribute, or?
Uh, thanks, worship. I, at the SUMA conference, I did get to sit down on the Department of, or Municipal of Highways, and as a well aware, every community has issues with their highways. There's lots of places that have them, and although we have very little this year in the budget for that, you can see that the demands are great and that we continue to try to showcase what we need in our area. So although there is not anything in this year's budget, we certainly have some highways that are on the list for the next coming years.
Appreciate that, and we're also lobbying hard for some of our smaller communities, like Roche Percy, which is sorely needed to fix that highway. It's unfortunate we didn't do that at the same time we went to Portal, but again, the next best time is now, right?
The, the community of Roche Percy did send us a letter to the Southeast Transportation, and we've forwarded on to the Mus, the highways, and we'll look for a response from them to see what they have, if they have any ideas when they're gonna do that, or if they're gonna do it.
Yeah, appreciate that. Hopefully, they'll fit it in. So you'll make a motion to accept the minutes? Okay, thank you.
Sure, worship, I will.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Wallyser. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Service Valley Theater, the minutes of March 18th. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Service Valley Theater, the minutes of March eighteenth. Could we have a motion please for that? Thank you, Counselor Cernik, seconded by Counselor Ford. Counselor Cernik, you're the man on the ground there. What's, uh, any comments or?
Yeah, I just, uh, just want to add that the, the board's, uh, you know, busy getting ready for the summer. There'll be youth camps running through June and July. And then their main show, which is, uh, called Ladies Foursome, has to do with golf. And, uh, but that'll be the main show in July, so everything's coming together and looks good.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cernik. It's always nice for clarification on things like that, so thank you for that. Now I lost my train of thought. Did we get a second or that?
You have a secondary.
Okay, thank you. Okay, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Public Works Manager, the Dust Control Tender for twenty twenty-two. Uh, what's the wish of council on this? Counselor Cernik? Thank you. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Counselor Frank. It looks like everything's in order. Any comments, city manager?
Nothing, Daddy, Worship. These are, uh, similar to what have been awarded in the past, and I believe Norm is comfortable with the product and the individuals.
Super, thank you. Counselor Wollizer, did you have your hand up? No? Okay, just my full pause, sorry. Okay, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, under executive reports from engineering, we have the tender for Kington Nicholson, Lynn Crescent Reconstruction. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, uh, our engineer, Kafloom, uh, that went door to door and, uh, answered any questions that had to be answered, and, uh, he did a very good job, so thank you for that, Kafloom. What's the wish of council on this? Counselor Cernik?
Just make the motion to accept it.
Thank you. You're doing a lot of the heavy lifting over there this evening on that side. I appreciate that. Please take notice, the other two, Counselor Frank.
We like to just talk, not actually pass motions. We'll leave that for the new guys.
Okay, that's.
We don't want our name on anything, Your Worship. Uh, you're, I just wanted to clarify, this, it'll also include some new sidewalk construction. We've, the neighborhood was all good with that and everybody's great. So yeah, then I'll second it.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further comments? Uh, Counselor Wollizer?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just curious how this compares to the budget for this project this year.
Uh, thank you, Counselor W- Wollizer. Uh, I believe we were looking around that three eighty to four hundred, so it is a little bit more just with some supply chain issues and some costs going up. Uh, it is within the infrastructure fund that we've allocated for water main replacements and surface replacements, so we will make sure that it fits within the current budget.
Thank you.
Okay, good point, thank you. Okay, uh, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Uh, next, under executive reports from the Tax Assessor, utility disconnection policy. We've all had the opportunity to see the upgrade in this policy. Uh, what's council's thoughts on this? Hopefully we're okay with that. Uh, Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Worship. I'll make that, uh, motion. I think it sets out clearly, uh, what we, what we intend to do if people don't pay their bill and you know, is to get people that aren't paying for water to, to pay for water, and I think it's important that we have a clear, uh, document that says how we're going to deal with that. And I think that meet, this document will meet that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, and anytime we have issues, sometimes we have to upgrade the policy, uh, to reflect the fact that, uh, you know, we have to also upgrade when we do have issues, what we do. Uh, so yeah, appreciate that. Have we got a second or? Counselor Roba?
I will second it, and I just, I noticed one here, uh, one change. It's with no exceptions will be made under the procedures. And I'm assuming that's because people want to come in, make payment arrangements, but they wait until after the disconnect to do that. So I think this is a huge, um, alert to people to basically realize that if you want to make payments, uh, make, um, arrangements, do it before the disconnect, because under this new bylaw, there will be no exceptions made, which means once your water's cut off, you will pay the penalty and that just costs you more money, so.
That's correct.
I will second it and encourage everyone that is having an issue with paying their water bill to be proactive instead of reactive after it's been cut off.
Uh, thank you for that, uh, good advice. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, next, from, uh, in executive reports from the Estevan Choppers Mall, uh, subdivision report. So this subdivision is to create a point six hectare, one point four seven acre parcel in the southeast corner of the Estevan Choppers Mall property. The long-term intent is to develop a multi-unit residential project on the property through a concept plan that has not been submitted as of yet, but we expect it will be. So what's the wish of council on this? Counselor Ford?
I'll accept the recommendation, Your Wor- Worship, with the requirements that they've listed below.
Okay, thank you for that. And Counselor Cernik, was that a seconded? Thank you. Okay, appreciate that. Any questions or comments? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I, I just, uh, thanks, Worship. I just think this is, uh, shows you that we're interested in supporting all the areas of town. I mean, so much of the talk has been about downtown revitalization and, and with the, the mall ownership and what they're doing over there. I think it's just another encouragement of what's going on in, in the city and I thi- I, you know, I think they've taken advantage of something that should be a positive to the community, so I would support that too.
Absolutely, and thank you for that. Uh, it does look very positive if, if this moves, uh, forward, so. Okay, uh, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Uh, next, under executive reports, we have the building official permits for March. Could we have a motion please to accept those? Counselor Wollizer, thank you. Have we got a second or? Thank you, Counselor Ford. See, now you're already picking up the slack over there. That's great. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Uh, next, under introduction of bylaws, we have bylaw twenty twenty-two dash twenty fifty-four, amending traffic bylaw for ATV usage first reading. So of course we'll give this first reading, give the public the opportunity to give, uh, feedback. And now the province has bought us a ATV, complete with lights, for the police. So if we have to, we could, uh, patrol not only the pathways if they have to, if they have an incident, but down in the valley as well. So it's got potential to help us out, uh, you know, with our policing in another area. Counselor Roba?
Thank you, Worship, and I think this, uh, will also come in handy even for the events with the moose that we had this past season. Uh, there was a few times it was in the Pleasantdale area and the Pleasantdale Valley, and I think if the police had a way of getting down into there safely and be able to maybe even follow the moose at a safe distance, things like that, and also missing people. When we have a missing persons, especially children or the elderly, I know about ten years ago at Creighton Lodge, we actually had one gentleman go missing and he was found, um, over in the Westview area, so.
Yeah, that, that's a very good point. Now, the moose, I would be a little cautious about taking it after a moose. The moose would step on it. That would be it, but I totally agree with kids and the elderly. I totally agree. You don't want a bad moose coming at you.
What if the moose was hurt? They might have to go down there. I don't want to direct the, the police force, but I think it's a good thing.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Worship. Um, I just was wondering, I know our, our fire department has an ATV as well that they typically use for wildland fires and stuff, not, not necessarily in town, but I'm curious if it wouldn't be to their benefit to also list them or maybe just change it to a listing of emergency vehicles. Um, should, for some reason, I mean, obviously, I don't know the circumstances that might, might require it, but if, if that reason were to happen, I would want to hope that we could allow them to do that.
In case we needed the other one, we have actually two. We never thought of using the other one, but, you know, if we had to.
Even the way this is stated, just says shall not apply to, well, it's police vehicles, equipment for police emergency. Even if we just said to, for emergency vehicles at the discretion of police, chief of police, we could still leave it at his discretion or whatever need be. That would be, uh, just to give us a little bit more freedom in an emergency situation. Obviously, we don't want to have a bylaw prohibiting something that could, could keep people safe, so.
Sure, and maybe if we sent two ATVs after the moose, it might scare them.
Two ATVs after moose might do it.
That might do it, okay.
And I think the fire ATV is a lot bigger, so the moose might pay attention.
It might. Okay, any other comments? Okay, uh, we've got the first and seconded, right? We don't? Oh, okay. Thank you, Counselor Roba made a first. Counselor Frank, seconded?
Either way, yeah.
Okay. Uh, I, well, we can do that. Uh, what's your wish, uh, city clerk on that?
Your worship to Counselor Frank, I will consult with fire and if they deem that that's what they want, then I will make that addition, so for the second and third reading.
For the second, third reading.
But I'll leave it up to the chief, because he actually has other authorizing powers that may not need necessarily.
Yeah, as you pointed out, yeah. Okay, uh, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Uh, next, under public hearings and reports, we have none. Uh, giving notice, uh, none this evening. Motion from committee, none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, none this evening. Inquiries, Counselor Roba?
Thank you, Worship. I actually had two. The first one is kind of a garbage issue. I wasn't sure if maybe I should talk about it during, when we talked about garbage earlier, but on Fourth Street, there was, uh, someone who I'm going to assume is living in one of the apartments above one of the businesses on Fourth Street, and he came out carrying a garbage bag and he put it into one of our trash cans on Fourth Street. So since that time, which was about probably six weeks ago, Counselor Ford and I noticed that, um, I've noticed that quite often our garbage cans downtown have these large black garbage bags in them. So I'm just curious and I'm assuming that the people who are renting these apartments, the building owners, must have trash cans in the back alley available for these people? And I just thought maybe we could send a reminder to the building owners to ensure that all people that rent from them know where the suitable location is for their trash to go into. I think it's great. They're not throwing it on the ground, however, filling up our trash bins like that is not really suitable either.
Yeah, no, that's a fair comment, and also the bylaw calls for parking in the appropriate areas and that also is responsible of the building owner, and we've had some interactions on that over the years as well.
Yeah.
City manager, did you want to add to that at all?
Not to your worship. I, I, I have seen the Fourth Street bins fairly full and it's, GFL does have a, uh, routine to dump those, so I think we'll talk to Morgan and we'll try to see, make sure those building owners do have residential garbage or they can use the commercial one in the back if there's an ingredient place.
Okay, uh, thank you, Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Worship. I was just wondering, does our bylaw, I thought it did, do we, we have a requirement that an apartment building has some sort of trash removal, right? Because there's only, I think if it's a fourplex or something, they get the bins like normal houses do, and if it's larger than that, they, they don't get the rollout bins. But it is a requirement that they have some sort of garbage disposal solution, correct?
Yeah.
As long as that, yeah, so then that would be good, then we can make sure those properties have something. It'd be pretty easy to identify an apartment building that's five or more come and has no garbage bin nearby. It'd be pretty easy to identify that that would be definitely a problem, so yeah, that's good to know.
And then my second thing was just when we attended the SUMA conference last week in Regina, there was a lot of interesting discussion. I'm sure my colleagues here today will all want to discuss something that they took back, but something I really enjoyed hearing about is the SAS Docs program. And so I'm hoping that with that program, it will actually bring more doctors to our area and also to all of Saskatchewan, because that was a common theme talked about at SUMA by all the communities that were there, is the lack of medical, um, personnel, whether that be nurse practitioners, physicians, RNs, LPNs. Um, COVID was real and it burnt everybody out, and so we've lost people in all areas of healthcare. But I'm hoping, I was really hopeful when I heard about the SAS Docs program returning, that this will actually be an answer to a part of our problem at least, if not all of it, so.
Yeah, good point, and also more ICU beds across the province.
That was another great.
That really came tonight, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Clark?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wollizer?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you, but you're both very excited as first time SUMA attendance. I can tell. You can hardly both conceal your excitement over having been able to go, correct?
Thanks, Worship. I would like to acknowledge, I guess, that Counselor Cernik got to the mic and, and promoted the carbon capture for our community, and I think that was a, a big chance to talk to the politicians about how important it was and I'm sorry that I missed that chance, but I do, uh, appreciate what he did for our community, uh, at SUMA. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good job, Counselor Cernik. Thank you for that, and it's not easy, uh, to get up in front of a crowd that large, uh, so thank. Thank you for that. Okay, Counselor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. My comment, my one comment was about SUMA as well, um, and I was sat in a couple of healthcare meetings, being on the hospital council. It was very interesting and everybody is having the same problem as us, and I, I think, I think some of the ministers really heard when every single person got up and harped the same question over and over and over again, so I hope it brings some positive change. And my positive other thing for the day, for the day, is I just want to give a big shout out to the families that were involved in bringing the Ukrainian refugee family to Estevan. They touched down yesterday and are settled safely in their homes, so it's a big shout out to the Biggs family and the Peterson family and all the, the Ukrainians who are here who, who located those, that family and brought them here. Um, I did receive a comment from Josh Biggs today and their, the boy that, the Ukrainian boy that came, he said that Estevan looked like something from the movies, so they are very excited to get out of their quarantine and, uh, to go tour around things and see things and so I, I think we should just, uh, have a little bit of patience with these people. They are learning English. There's going to be a couple more families, I believe, coming and there, there is a network in Saskatchewan of, of people trying to help these people get through the red tape and all these refugees to Saskatchewan. So I think we're just, in the coming weeks, we need to just have a little bit of patience and help out in any way we can.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Counselor Ford, and we do thank, uh, Josh Biggs and Mr. Peterson. And we welcome, uh, the new, uh, Ukrainians to our province, and, uh, I know we will have more and, uh, they'll be a great addition to our community, absolutely. Counselor Cernik?
Thank you, Worship. I more, more or less have accolades tonight rather than inquiries. Uh, the first one, just be in the, over the past five days, Estevan hosted the, uh, Estevan Strippers Spring Bust Hockey Tournament, uh, which is the biggest rec tournament in the province. Um, it was a huge success. The city was buzzing. Um, everyone had a good time that I've seen. Maybe one guy didn't, but so, but I do want to give a big shout out to all the volunteers. There's way too many to name, but I do want to spend, uh, send a special thanks to two of them, um, Steve Godfrey and Rick O'Hutton. Those two are kind of our stripper godfathers that make the actual weekend happen, so special thanks to them. And my second accolade was, uh, kind of what Counselor Clark, I did get up in front of the bear pit, asked about carbon capture. And I do want to give a shout out to the Honorable Minister Bronwyn Air, who actually followed up with myself a couple days after. And, uh, we had a good conversation about our energy needs and stuff like that, so, uh, wait for that, uh, you won't see that, you won't hear that conversation, but there's, uh, there's news always coming out about that, so they are, uh, fighting as best they can for us in this area, so.
Yeah, it's great to hear, and she's a very capable minister. Uh, I've had the privilege of meeting her a few times and a very nice lady.
Yeah, she's, she's very well in tune with the needs of the area, for sure.
Absolutely. So, uh, thank you for that, and yeah, all, uh, Rick and, and Steve have, you know, been mainstays of the stripper tournament. And thanks to people like themselves, it's always a huge success. So our hats, uh, go out to them as well as all the volunteers, of which it takes a lot, and we have them, God bless them. Uh, go ahead.
Sorry, there was one final thing. It was a, it was a total for fun, but, uh, there was, his name is Brad Fryers and, uh, somebody got his signed jersey and they did auction it off, or actually it was a silent auction. And the auction, the proceeds are going to go to new showerheads for the facilities. And amazingly enough, as a joke and everything, it brought in two hundred and seventy dollars, I do believe, so thanks, thanks to Brad for being good cooperation, even though he didn't know, and, uh, all good.
Super, and we thank him for the new showerheads. We will be getting sued. Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Frank?
This evening, Worship.
Okay, uh, city manager? Okay, Trudy's not with us this evening. City clerk, I know your husband played a big part in the strippers. No? Well, he was there, and, and you were good bringing him home and taking care of him, so that's good. Uh, do other comments?
No comments.
Okay, well, with the potential storm tomorrow, Helen asked me to read this, so I will. Uh, good afternoon. We have been advised by Environment Canada with a warning for southeast Saskatchewan. We're expecting a major blizzard starting Tuesday night around nine PM. Throughout the night, conditions will deteriorate with expected blizzard conditions all day Wednesday with wind gusts Thursday and blowing snow and tapering off by Friday. Expected snowfall accumulation is forty to fifty centimeters or higher, accompanied by northerly winds gusting seventy to ninety K, causing zero visi- visibility. Travel will be, become increasingly. Travel will be, become increasingly difficult throughout Wednesday, with highway closures a near certainty. By Wednesday evening, travel within the communities may become impossible as the heavy snow and strong winds continue. More of the same is expected on Thursday. One in thirty years, spring snowstorm will impact southeast Saskatchewan. It is important to be prepared by ensuring that you have ample supply of your medications, food, water requirements, money for incidentals, and fuel up your vehicles. The public is requested to stay off the streets and highways to ensure your safety during these blizzard conditions. It's imperative to allow emergency vehicles and public works snow removal crews to do their jobs safely. To assist in your safety, please review your emergency preparedness plan found at www'estevan.ca. Please be sure you are prepared at home and at work. So we thank Helen for that, and hopefully this storm misses us, but there's a very good chance it could hit us, so you know, if you need a few groceries, maybe get them before tomorrow night. And with that, do we have a motion to move into committee? Counselor Roba, seconded by Counselor Frank. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you, and good evening. We stand adjourned.